Good evening. I call this Tacoma Public School Board Business Meeting to order for December 14th, 2023. Will everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one law, and every individual.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Benro, would you please call a roll?
Yes. President Bonbright?
Here.
Vice President Stroger?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director McElroy?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And do we have any student reps here?
Our student reps this year are Amanda Peterson, Zalicia DeLeon, Lillian Taylor, and Amelia Constantine.
Welcome, Lillian. All right. So we are now at item five. I would like to know if anyone would like to move the agenda?
I'll move to the top.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, and, oh, do you have any questions or thoughts or comments on the agenda? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions? Pass is four zero. And now I, on to item number six, the oath of office. I'll turn this over to the superintendent.
Good evening. We have two oaths of office tonight, and so I have the unique pleasure to help swear in on behalf of the state of Washington, two of our school directors. Vice President Stroger, would you please stand?
I can do it from here, right?
You can, if you'd like to. If you could repeat after me. I, Corey Stroger.
I, Corey Stroger.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of district, of, oh, excuse me, of director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yay!
Madam President, would you please stand? Would you please repeat after me? I, Elizabeth Bonbright.
I, Elizabeth Bonbright.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of director of Tacoma School District Number 10.
Of director of School District Number 10.
Tacoma School District Number 10.
The Tacoma School District Number 10.
Thank you. I mumbled, I mumbled. Pierce County.
Pierce County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And now another exciting piece. We're going to move to item number seven, board reorganization. And before I turn it over to the general counsel, who will run the election process, I just wanted to thank my colleagues and for allowing me to be president for two years now and vice president before that. So I really appreciate the term, long-term I've had as leadership here. So I will now turn it over to the general counsel.
So the process for electing board officers is spelled out in state law and board policy. So for those watching at home, RCW 28A dot three thirty is the state law that governs public school districts electing board officers. And Tacoma School District Board Policy 1210 is how we in Tacoma implement that state law. So Board Policy 1210 spells out the specific procedure and says that at its first regular meeting in December, the school board shall elect from its members a board president and vice president to serve one-year terms. So the process per 1210, I'll summarize it real briefly, is that we'll have somebody on the board rise to not, and you don't have to rise, you know, literally rise, but rise and raise to nominate a candidate. We'll have somebody second that nomination, and then we'll call for any other candidates for board president, and we'll have somebody second that nomination, and then we'll actually cast the vote. And if any candidate receives a majority of the board vote, that candidate becomes the board president. By law, you must have a majority of the board, not a majority of the folk present. So a minimum of three votes will be necessary to win the election for board president. We then go through that same process for the vice presidency. And once the elections are complete, the results take effect immediately, post-vote. So if it's necessary, we would take a quick break if we needed to reorganize the deus. Among the duties of the president and vice president are presiding over the board meeting. So if needed, somebody else would finish the rest of the board meeting if they became president. So if we're ready, should we go ahead and start?
We're ready.
All right. So first, I would call for somebody to nominate a board president for the Tacoma School District School Board.
Well, I would like to nominate Director Lisa Keating for board president.
Okay. Do we have a second for that nomination?
Aye, second.
Okay. Do we have any more nominations for the office of president? Okay. Hearing none, we'll cast our votes. So again, by state law, this is a roll call vote. So we'll start with you, President Bonbright.
Aye.
You vote, okay. Director Keating, who do you want more?
Aye.
Okay. Director McElroy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger?
Aye.
All right. Having received a majority of the board, we have a new president. Let's do vice president, and then we'll go ahead and reorganize if we have to. Okay, so we'll do the same thing for the vice presidency?
Yeah. I am like, ah! Ready to come?
All right. So that was for presidency. Do I hear a nomination for vice president of the school board?
I nominate Corey Stroger for vice president.
Second.
Wow.
Having received a nomination and a second, and we're going to call for any other nominations for school board vice president? So hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote for Vice President Stroger. I'll start with you again. I'll start with you, President Keating. How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Director McElroy?
Aye.
Director Bonbright?
Aye.
All right. And Vice President Stroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. So we, so we don't have a change in the vice presidency, but congratulations, President Keating. You're now the president of the school board.
Very graceful.
Yes, thank you.
Very graceful. First, I want to just thank Elizabeth. There is a lot of work that happens that most don't get to see that we do, and Elizabeth has carried an immense amount of work and responsibility and contribution for us, not just for the last four years since she and I were sworn in, but also the last three years in leadership. And so I would really like to honor you and thank you for your commitment and your passion and your dedication to not just the school board, but to the district and our staff and our community. So thank you very much. Whoa.
Nine point one.
That's very big. Sorry. Okay. Item number nine, recognition of staff, students, and community. Nine point one, state holidays and civic observances.
Yes, so we have one state holiday this month, which is Christmas Day, December 25th. As with all state holidays, in addition to no school for students, school buildings and district offices will be closed as well. So this year, our winter break starts for students Monday, December 18th, and school resumes on Tuesday, January 2nd. And as an FYI for members of the community, during winter break, schools and district offices will be closed on four days this winter break, and those days are December 22nd, which is a Friday, Monday, December 25th, which is Christmas Day, and then again on Friday, December 29th, and then Monday, on New Year's Day, Monday, January 1st. So as always, these dates are located at the district's calendar, available on the TPS website. And that's it for December.
Thank you. Item nine point two, recognition of WASDA 2023 Board of Distinction Award.
Good evening. Tanisha Jumper, Chief Communications Officer. We are proud to recognize the school board for earning the 2023 Board of Distinction Award. Our board has recognized for addressing opportunity gaps and holding the school district accountable for measures, measuring student academic progress and needs based on the valid and reliable assessments. Under addressing opportunity gaps, as, at the start of 2023, Tacoma experienced a rapid disturbing increase in youth gun violence. Ten TPS students were directly impacted by that violence, and school member members spoke out and acted on behalf of students by spearheading conversations about violence and how to address it. The result was summer late-night program, a citywide effort that welcomed middle school and high school students at a dozen sites for socializing activities and dinner every night during the summer. More than 10,170 visits were logged at summer late nights, with an average of 261 middle and high schoolers showing up each night. Under the area of measuring student achievement, academic progress, last year, our teaching and learning team developed a plan to examine the district's 20-year-old policy that guides grading practices, the board goals. What the board's goal was to take a holistic look at grades to support both student academic success and mental health. They dug into the issues by participating in in-person listening sessions at 10 middle schools and high schools. As a result of this work and additional pieces of research, structures were added to teach to, so teachers must attach standards to assignments, thus helping students and families see and understand the grading process. At the elementary level, there's now a live grade book that families can see, and at the secondary level, late work, behavior, and attendance is addressed in other ways, no longer affecting grades. The school board passed a revised grading policy in June of 2023. Congratulations on your award. Oh, sorry. This is my first time doing this. The Chief Communications Officer recognizes Tacoma Public School Board of Directors for earning the 2023 Board of Distinction Award from Washington State School Directors Association. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, the superintendent's report. Item 10.1, whole educator recognition. And I believe we have Dr. Forrest Greek coming up right now for that.
Thank you so much, President Keating. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. So this December, we get to recognize office professionals and professional technical employees. And as you probably know, they are critical to the success across Tacoma schools. Everything from providing that support around programming behind the scenes at the building and even technically every office across this school district. It's amazing the work that they do. I want to highlight two individuals. I'll switch here. Oops. In the back, so Kevin Medford and Mark Crapo in the back here, they are some of our PT staff, and they're working the scenes. I did promise Kevin that we wouldn't turn the cameras on him and do a selfie because we need to keep going here, but I'd like to recognize these two. And then I'm going to have Bernadette come up here and join me, and she's going to talk a little bit about other staff that support our buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Greek. First of all, apologies for my attire. It's Spirit Week.
No apologies needed.
That's how we do. So you'll see on the slide that we are also looking to recognize Jeremy Switzer and Leslie Hensley. And I would like to talk generally about our staff. Our office professional and professional technical staff are, throughout the district, are often the heart and soul of our schools. OPs are the first you'll see when you walk into a main office, face greeting you warmly and setting the tone for the culture of the schoolhouse. The professional technicals hold those unique roles many of us don't know how to explain. And many of our OPPT staff are former students and graduates of our schools. At my school, four of the eight are graduates of Wilson High School and now work tirelessly to continue to build excellence at Silas High School. I know this to be true of many of our schools, of our OPPT staff at school sites, other school sites, and at CAB and other sites as well. I also know the three now showing on the slide, Charlotte McFarland, Sheila Swift, and Anita Jordan. And again, I just know that when you walk into a school, it is often the OPs and the PTs who set the tone for the culture of the building and your experience in that space. And for families, community partners, other staff members, but especially for our students, that is critical. So it's my pleasure to recognize the OPPT staff members. And if you are, if there's any present in the room and you are an OP or a PT staff member, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you all for being the heart and soul of the Tacoma family.
Madam President, I would just like to echo Principal Ray's comments. I was at Silas yesterday and very similar experience. Welcoming sets the tone, watching the interactions, it's dynamic interaction, not only supporting their colleagues from other staff, and it's not uncommon in any of the buildings and central offices and a lot of our support services areas. Students' needs that are dynamic in real time, the grace and the patience and expertise is so appreciated. So I just want to say thank you. I'd also like to echo your comments, Madam President, to thank our past President Bonbright. Past President Bonbright has served our community relentlessly for the last few years. And I think you said it well, no one will really know the hundreds of hours that she and Vice President Stroger have put behind the scenes trying to lead the community. And so just on behalf of the entire staff, I want to say thank you so much. We look forward to working with you in this other way, and we look forward to working with you, President Keating and Vice President Stroger, as always, Director McElroy as well. I want to take a moment to thank our staff, our students, and our communities. This work is hard. Tomorrow is the last student day. I hope each of us gets a moment to take a breath and experience some moments of joy and peace and happiness with loved ones. Know that we will be back. We will be here for you when you return. And I hope that everyone gets a chance to be with those that they love and they care about, and that they can be in the moment for the next couple of weeks and enjoy a little bit of time outside of the classroom and the schools and the offices. And with that said, there will be full sets of activities with athletics and activities all across, and so knowing that there will still be very much active campuses. So thank you very much to that. And then finally, last board meeting, there were a few requests made of you at the district or as the board on behalf of our TEA partners. And President, excuse me, past President Bonbright asked the staff to work with TEA on some of those very specific actions, in which, through the labor management process, which is our natural process, I asked Assistant Superintendent Trubood to follow through on those activities and those conversations. And then I asked her to give us a little bit of an update, because I think there are important conversations that we continue to follow through and think about what are our next steps, although we may not be able to address everything right off the bat. We do have a responsibility to keep on moving forward in that area. So Assistant Superintendent Trubood, can you give us an update on those asks and what we've done since?
Thank you, Superintendent Garcia. We, I'm proud to lead our Labor Management Committee. Our contract with the Tacoma Education Association provides in Section 15 for a Labor Management Committee, and we meet every month with the TEA president and their executive board, not only for our certificated members, but then there's another meeting for OPPTs, and then another meeting for special education labor management. And so when we have issues that come up, we work through the labor management process to try and problem-solve collaboratively. After you got a letter from TEA and TEA spoke at the last board meeting, President Bonbright asked me to work with TEA in the labor management meeting. There were four items that the board asked of you. First was to provide extensive training and staff development when implementing new district-wide systems and curriculum. The update on that is that we had a labor management meeting on Monday, and we did some brainstorming and talked about what some best practices would be. It was great to hear from some of the members of the executive board who told us about some of the things that they saw that went well during the synergy implementation and things that we could do better next time. So it's falling on me to follow up and continue to work with TEA in the labor management process, to work on a best practices document, something that we can implement the next time we do a district-wide rollout. The second item was they asked about Schoology, which is our learning management system. And Zeke Edman, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, provided an update today that Schoology, the contract is ending at the end of this school year, but a process is starting to do an RFI for another labor manager, or another learning management system, and he will be including members of TEA and others from across the district in that process. The third was they asked the board to implement a policy around evaluating technology and implementing technology, and our very own Susan Anderson from the legal department is taking a look now to see if there are any model policies from WASDA or other districts who have model policies, and we'll take a look at those model policies and work through labor management to see if there's something that we should bring to the board. And then the last item was, can we take some things off of educators? And this is that time of year where everybody feels the pressure. We used our, at least for elementary, on the eighth of December, we used that day as a day for educators to be able to catch up, spend some time in Schoology, spend some time with grading. And then our members of my team are looking at other things that we can do to take things off, try to reduce bureaucracy, reduce paperwork, and make it easier so that our teachers can spend more time with students. So that's the update I have for you, and we'll continue to keep you updated as we work through those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. That's my report tonight.
Thank you. All right. Item number, well, no staff. Item number 11, staff report to the board, and there is none. Item number 12, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during this meeting, during the meeting. The superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@takoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. Under Board Policy 1430, public comment, the board president may terminate an individual's comment when the allocated time has passed and may interrupt a speaker to require the same standard of civility that the board imposes on itself. Examples of uncivil comments include comments that are libus or slanderous under a legal standard, are unwarranted invasion, invasion of privacy, are obscene or indecent pursuant to the Federal Communications Act, or any rule or regulation of the Federal Communications Commission, violate school district policy or procedure related to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or discrimination, incite an unlawful act on school premises, or violate a law school regulating, school regulation, or create a material and substantial disruption of the orderly operation of the board meeting. The board as a whole has the final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings and can maintain order by removing those who are disruptive. However, the board recognizes the distinction between uncivil discourse, which it is not, which it will not tolerate, and comments about the board, district, and/or staff that are negative yet still civil in nature. The board will exercise its authority to maintain order in a content neutral, in a content-neutral manner. Option one, verbal comment. The general counsel will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there is a large, large number of speakers, time may be limited at the presence discretion. Option two, written comment. The following members of the public have submitted written comment, written public comment previously to tonight, Gavin Morgan, regarding teacher's frustration. And I'm going to turn it over to General Benrow.
Yes, thank you very much, President Keating. So Board Policy 1430 governs public comment, and you can find a summary of Board Policy 1430 on the back of the blue comment cards near the entry. So today, we have that one written comment you mentioned, President Keating, and we have six verbal comments. The first is from somebody who wasn't able to speak at the last meeting, so we'll check to see if they're here today. This is Rupeka Madavan, if she's able to be here today. Not today? Okay. We'll move on to the next speaker, which is Penny Kramer.
Good evening. I'm Penny Kramer, Tacoma Education Association president. My educator mom taught me to make friends with the secretary, the cook, the janitor, because they run the schools. I've updated it a little bit. Make friends with the office professionals, the IT department, the lunchroom staff, and the custodians, because they do run the schools. Tonight, I'm here to help honor our office professional and professional technical members who keep our schools and our district up and running. Kalen Kenny was here, and he was on the slide, but he was not mentioned, and I just want to bring to your attention that he is one of the handful of members who got synergy working and up and running and is continuing to intervene to make sure it continues to run. So thank you to all of our members. We could not educate our students without the work of these professionals. We see you and we thank you for your work. So I know there's a few left. Thank you. I am also here to continue advocating for our members and our students. The recently adopted grading regulation is continuing to cause workload issues for our members, which dramatically affects our ability to serve our students and families. After witnessing the impacts of these new policies, we did a survey, and the data clearly shows that these are ongoing, there are ongoing and lasting impacts of this regulation. This information was also shared with the labor management team earlier this week. Seventy percent of the responding staff said the regulation has increased their workload. Fifty percent of staff said their workload has caused them to consider finding another job next year. Seventy-nine percent of staff have been working extra hours due to the regulation, with some of them giving more than 10 hours per week in unpaid labor. Forty-nine percent do not feel comfortable explaining the new regulation to families or members of the community, probably not to students either, though we didn't ask that. These issues need to be addressed because they affect our ability to educate our students. This week in labor management meetings, as you heard, we made some progress on these topics, and we appreciate the effort, but there is much more to improve. I share a second concern with you about communication. As the elected representative of approximately 2,400 employees in TPS, it's important to build collaborative working relationships with leadership and the school board. This evening, I bring to your attention Standard 5 from the WASDA board standards, which focuses on engaging the local community. You cannot build and maintain positive relationships with the community and staff if you do not respond to emails from us. I remain deeply disappointed that elected representatives have not responded to my most recent communication on behalf of my members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Lawrence Haskins.
As the bearish here stated, my name is Arlen Lawrence Haskins, and I come before you again to express our frustration and deep disappointment in the handling of the provable abuse that our son Orion suffered at the hands of Teacher Kathy Scar. We are pleased that Teacher Scar was terminated last month, but there's still much work to be done. Individuals like Teacher Scar, like former Teacher Scar, do not operate in a vacuum. They are able to thrive because their supervisors don't intervene. That's period. There is documentation that Kathy Scar was a problem for years. So tonight, I could stand here. Good evening. As the bearers here stated, my name is Arlen Lawrence Haskins. And I come before you again to express our frustration and deep disappointment in the handling of the provable abuse that our son Orion suffered at the hands of teacher Kathy Scar. We are pleased that teacher Scar was terminated last month, but there's still much work to be done. Individuals like teacher Scar, like former teacher Scar, do not operate in a vacuum. They are able to thrive because their supervisors don't intervene. That's period. There is documentation that Kathy Scar was a problem for years. So tonight, I could stand here, and I could rail, and I could tell you guys what I want, but I have no supervisory or no compulsory authority over any of you in this room. But what I will ask you directly is this: instead of what I want, what does the district want? Do you want a principal like Regina Lake who will obfuscate the truth, who will lie about the safety of your children, literally lie about it, and who fails to report to law enforcement when she knows that a teacher is an imminent and criminally abusive threat, not only to our kids, not only to our kids, but to other kids as well? I was, I found it interesting this evening, and congratulations, President Keating. As you sit in that seat newly tonight, my hope is that you will look into this matter and ask your fellow board members and fellow people in the district, why someone who failed to report, not only in my son's case, but also in our daughter's case, who failed to report, why is she still a principal? Why does Regina Lake still hold the Office of Trust? And that's just, that's just the facts. But aside from that, even above that is how she arrogantly and flagrantly tried to manhandle me and my wife when we brought our concerns. We tried for literally weeks to reason with Regina Lake, quietly, calmly, I mean, we really tried to keep this off the radar. But she very arrogantly told us that she had talked to H R, they were happy Kathy Scar was following the rules, the investigation is closed. We didn't even know what happened to our son. And now we know why she did that, because there was much to cover up. So the district, my time is ending, but everyone in here, I am hoping that you guys will look within yourselves while you guys are giving each other these accolades tonight and say, what is the real work that needs to be done? Why is Regina Lake still a principal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Masiel Brem.
My name is Masiel Brem. I was born, oh, sorry. I was born, raised, and educated in Panama. With me is my husband Cole, a Tacoma native. We have a 10-year-old son who currently attends the fourth grade at Skyline Elementary. Sorry if I'm being emotional, but it hurts, it's frustrating, believe me. We are here tonight because we have no other choice but to demand what is right for the safety of our children. Please put yourselves in our shoes for a moment. How would you feel if you were desperately looking for justice for your third-grade child who was wrongfully accused of something he didn't do? And all you get is a vague email reply from the adult you entrusted your child with saying, it's time to move on. Dismissing your concern as a parent, would you trust this person? How would you feel when you find out that your kid has been bullied, assaulted, in the hands of adults? We have deposited our trust. Would you trust that adult again? How do you feel knowing that two families gave up and decided to withdraw their children from Skyline because of condescending treatment and poor conflict resolution the current principal has? What happened to our child took more than 10 days to resolve, and I had to reach out to Ms. Julie Ray for help. Ask yourself, why did we have to reach an upper level? Why are we here? We strongly believe that what happened to the Haskins family is not an isolated case. We wonder what other aid support did Skyline fail to provide, not just with the Haskins family case, but the many others that have not been brought to light. The teacher needed to be terminated, but it took terminating an educator for abuse for students to finally be provided with the recommended aid support the district was required to provide based on the needs of the students. My question is, what is Tacoma Public School District going to do to ensure the students have the amount of professional support the district is legally mandated to provide to guarantee a safe and inclusive environment for all of our children? Currently, and I do not blame them, we have exceptional teachers at Skyline, but the system has set them up to fail mostly due to the ratio of student versus teachers. Yes, our teachers need help. Yes, in a couple of years, Skyline Elementary will surpass its capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Rogers Kelly.
My name is Sarah Rogers Kelly. I'm in my ninth year of teaching for Tacoma Public Schools, and I truly love my students at Hilltop Heritage and the work I get to do with them, but I'm not here because of that. I'm here to talk to you as a parent. I have two children that have attended Tacoma Public Schools since kindergarten, and now we're in high school. One is preparing to graduate. He's navigated starting high school during a pandemic in an online setting, then transitioned to a hybrid, and now is wrapping his final year up amidst even more change. My major concern is how the district grading policy has been implemented through synergy. As a parent, I do not have access to my children's work, as their assignments are in Schoology. The only thing I can see is their GPA grade on assignments in synergy. If it weren't for my children being willing to show me their work in Schoology, I wouldn't know that synergy is negatively impacting grades by rounding them down. The background coding in synergy doesn't match up with the actual percent grades students have earned. It deflates students' grades by 2% to 3%. When I brought this up to CAD members, my concerns were dismissed, and I was treated as if I didn't understand the complexity of coding, when in reality, it's just math, and right now, the math doesn't add up. There have been several other members of T P S community that have demonstrated this deflation of grades through multiple simulations and scenarios. The data has been shared with administrators, and the response was be patient, trust the process, which leads me here. Juniors and seniors in high school cannot be patient and trust the process. They don't have that time. They are applying right now to colleges and to get scholarships. They have navigated all these different types of schooling since the pandemic and have figured out the systems just to have the target moved again to become subjective and qualitative instead of objective and quantitative. Right now, high school students deserve the right to receive their actual grades that they've earned. They should not have to wait for more training, more figuring out, or more tweaking of systems. This should have been figured out before school and before it was implemented. We, as a district, need to be transparent and have high level of integrity when setting students up for long-term success. College is expensive, and we should not be altering their roads to success in a way that's unclear. When researching standard-based grading and calling around the state, I learned that other districts who switched to standard-based grading did so over several years. They started with rolling out the new grading system in sixth grade and then move up after several years to high school. No other school district made this move after just two hours of training their teachers. Additionally, many of the other school districts allow their teachers to have grades posted as either percentages or four-point scales, especially at the high school level. I'm asking that teachers be allowed to enter grades in synergy as percentages, so students receive their actual grades. I'm asking that synergy GPA coding lines up with the grade percentages that have been shared with the community. I'd like the board to consider a true rollout of this grading system through synergy so that we can have teachers appropriately trained, and students can learn the new grading system and feel empowered.
Thank you.
All right, our last speaker this evening is Steve Giamanti.
I'd like to thank the school board for allowing open public comment, as this is not the case in all public meetings. So I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned for the safety of our students, our educators, and our staff. I'm a Tacoma resident, and I'm also the parent of a Grant C E A student. And this has been our first year in the public school system, and it's been a very difficult fall. So everyone in this room is aware that there's significant crime issues in Tacoma, that our level of violent crime, despite the crime reduction program, is still above pre-COVID levels. However, criminals have been increasingly targeting the areas directly adjacent to Grant C E A and Hilltop Heritage Middle School. This has led to significant disruption of the educational process, and I'm coming to you tonight with some specific recommendations. I realize that public safety is not Tacoma Public Schools' job, however, it has become our problem, right? And just to put some context into this, in the last three months, there have been public safety issues in the community that have led to either full lockdowns or modified lockdowns every two to three weeks at Hilltop Heritage and at Grant C E A, including most troubling, a teacher that was robbed at gunpoint while near the school grounds, children that were out on the recess grounds as a group full of other children drove by in a stolen car recklessly waving firearms, right? So the impact of children seeing other children engage in criminal behavior is concerning. So what do we do about it? First of all, I would like to understand where the community can find aggregate numbers of modified lockdowns and full lockdowns that are in response to public safety concerns in the community, so that we can engage our elected city leaders with data to continue to make the point that the public safety issue has not been resolved. Secondly, I would like to see consideration of potentially bringing back more school safety patrol resources. I realize at the time that those resource, that that money was allocated to other things, that wasn't really a need. It's become very clear now that the Tacoma Police Department resources are spread too thin to be able to respond in a timely fashion to safety incidents, and especially to respond proactively to safety threats. Finally, I know that criminals don't get created in a vacuum, and we need more than policing to solve this issue. My wife is a social worker, and having volunteered in the classrooms, she truly believes that there is more paraprofessional support needed for teachers. We talked about how the teacher-to-student ratio is quite high, and there has been an increase nationwide seen in moderate to severe behavioral issues in children. Paraprofessionals will allow teachers to continue to support education and give the children the help they need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Not this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item 13, the consent agenda.
I'm moved to adopt the consent agenda.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Let's see. Policy matters, oh, wait, yeah, 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 policy matters. Item 14.1, second reading of new policy 3225, school-based threat assessment.
Okay. The district's general counsel recommends the school board adopt the revised proposal of new policy 3225, and if you'd like, I could give you a brief summary of what changed since the last reading.
That'd be great.
So we came to you on November 9th at the November board meeting to put forth the school-based threat assessment policy. This is a new policy. We didn't have one before that we amended. It's based on a state law that requires public school districts in Washington State to adopt a state-approved framework to analyze school-based threat assessments. Since we came to you on November 9th, Director Baumright and the school district team met with the Equity Policy Review team, and if you look at the text of 3225, those areas that you see, which are in red, show the changes that were made post-first reading, largely spurred by feedback from community about specific aspects of this policy. So the changes that you see don't indicate we had a previous school-based threat assessment policy, but reflect the changes that were made after first reading due to public feedback.
Thank you. And since it is a second reading, we will need to take a...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we wanted to...
I move that we adopt the resolution.
The policy.
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 Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Is this one a roll?
Is it a roll?
What was the question?
This isn't a roll call.
No, not for policy. But if you, if you wanted questions or conversation, then you could go to a upper-down vote.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I just want to say that the Equity Policy Review team had a very robust conversation about this and was, and appreciate their input because it was really helpful. And it's just, anyway, so I wanted to say that since you last saw it in first reading, the changes that were made were very thoughtfully made by our colleagues and our public members that look at this from the outside, like the gentleman who was just speaking, kind of from a different perspective. And so that was very helpful. So I want to just thank them again.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right, item 15, financial report. The district's year-end financial report will be presented, and I'm going to pass it off to Chief Financial Officer Medina.
Good evening. Thank you. So I am bringing to you the 2223 year-end summary. We finished the 2223 books on November 15th, somewhere right around there. We had a little bit of a timing issue with when the board meeting was to when we were actually allowed to continue progressing through reporting our financials to the state, and so we had told you at that time in the last meeting that we would be bringing you the final, final numbers, and that will be what I would do tonight. I do think that it's important for us to have a brief conversation first around some of the things that are driving our expenses in the system. What we talked about at our last board meeting is that our fund balance has dropped, our fund balance reserve, our savings account, has dropped below the 5% board requirement per our policy. And so I wanted to talk a little more about why some of those things have happened. One would be our enrollment. So we're seeing some revenue fluctuations that we weren't anticipating. Revenues are down because of enrollment, because they make up the majority of our enrollment from the state. And I think that you're seeing that trend happen, not just locally within our neck of the woods, but also across the state and across the country. Birth rates have declined, people have left the state, and we're seeing the same impact happen in many districts over. We're also seeing some pretty significant inflation. And that inflation comes in many different forms, supplies, materials, we all see it in our own personal budgets. I know my orange juice costs a lot more than it used to. Car insurance costs a lot more than it used to. Rent is increasing. Everything seems to continue to go up, and those are resources that we don't have additional revenue coming in to cover. That puts us at a disadvantage. We either have to cannibalize or collapse expenditures within the system or come up with additional revenues. Because most of our revenues do come from the state, then we look to the state legislature to assist us with those, and we're just not seeing the same kind of growth from state legislators' revenues that we are seeing in the expenditure side of things. We also had some impacts due to ESER. So ESER was our one-time federal dollars that we received back at the beginning of the pandemic to assist with pandemic relief, trying to bring back learning loss issues, trying to help address any kind of financial concerns that we had during the pandemic. Those resources will expire in September of 2024, so we just have a few months left to claim and utilize those dollars. But we have also used those to help shift in expenditures to weather the storm, as well as provide additional services to our students in helping recovery, helping in recovery. And then lastly, of course, competitive market-driven salaries. We believe strongly in this district that we want to have market-driven salaries that are helping and ensure that we have great staff on hand and that we're retaining those staff, and that we are competing in the market and our local comparators, as well as our state comparators. But the state resources also don't keep up with the ability to do that. Additionally, and I'll show you on the next slide, a good portion of our resources are covered through our local levy, and the local levy doesn't grow in the same respects as our staffing costs have. So some other things that you'll see on our legislative agenda, we're not fully funded for our transportation, we're not fully funded for special education, our levy isn't being adjusted in the same respects as what we're seeing as inflation, and the basic education prototypical funding model just isn't able to keep up with the, not only the needs of what people are actually buying with, like different school districts are all buying the same types of things, but we're not being funded for them appropriately, as well as just covering the costs of the things that they do fund. So this slide is just meant to represent the comparison of what we have on staff. So if we have 100% of our, if this represents 100% of our staff and our basic education and local levies, the state funds right now in 2325... and local levies, the state funds right now in 2324, about 84% of those by staff numbers. So, they say of the 100% of that staff group, 84 of them are actually driven by the prototypical model. That means we're making local decisions of about 16% of those positions. But when we look at the salary component, while we're supposed to have about 84% of those 100 staff, 100% staff funded, we're only getting about 65% of the salaries to cover those. So, there's a disparity in what we're being authorized or allocated out by the state and what we're actually getting funding to receive payment for, and so, we have to pick up the difference between that. Incidentally, you'll notice back in 2016, '17, we were at a very similar disparity. What you see in the DIP in 1819, that's actually where McCleary funding came in. So, McCleary was the lawsuit that the state said, "We're going to invest a significant amount of resources into the system to help cover the cost of education and right-size the system," and that worked for a year, and then we're right back to where we started from before McCleary. So, just as a little bit of evidence around what's going on in school funding. To get into the actual 2223 year-end, these are the other funds, so non-general fund funds that we actually budget for. So, Associated Student Body, that's where we allocate resources for our student-directed funds. Students collect those funds, and then they direct them. They're not our, they're not our resources to receive or adjust. And the ending fund balance there was $2.2 million roughly in debt service. That's used to pay off our interest and principal, and the debt service ended at $33,000, excuse me, $33.5 million there. Just a quick note, I know that sounds like we have a lot of money sitting on the books on our debt service fund, and that seems unnecessary, but remember that it's based on the cash flow for the year, and we make payments in June and December, and so, we have to make sure that we have the resources on hand in August 31st when we end our books to make sure that we can cover for the December payments, so. Capital projects, are those the resources that we, the proceeds that we receive from the bonds go into the Capital Projects Fund, and they are then used to build our buildings and do refurbishments. Ending fund balance there is $355 million, although we plan to spend a good portion of that this coming year with many of the projects that we're working on. And finally, the Transportation Vehicle Fund, ending fund balance just over $3 million. That's used to buy yellow buses. When we get into the general fund budget specifically, so this is our main checkbook, we do see where our $18 million fund balance ends up. That's 3.5%, so I'll walk you through this a little bit. We have the budget planned on the left, and then we have our year-end actuals in the middle, and then the variance from budget to actual. Our beginning fund balance did end less than what we thought it would last year, and we weren't really sure that it was necessarily trends. We had some fluctuations at the end of the year that we weren't expecting in the 2122 year that led into that, and so, we knew we were on caution when we saw that resource change, and we've been tracking and monitoring that. When we got into our revenues, we revenues were budgeted at $571.5 million, and we came in just short of $536 million of revenue. That's about $35.5 million less than what we budgeted. However, we budgeted to receive every ESR dollar that we had available to us, which was about $55 million last year. We didn't end up using all those $55 million. So, the largest variance that we see in our revenues is really just the ESR dollars, the capacity that we had for ESR planned that we didn't utilize. We're going to be utilizing those in the 2324 year fully, but they just weren't fully utilized in the 2223 year. And that was by design. We knew we were doing that when we did it, but it does skew the way the data looks when we're trying to look at ourselves comparatively from year to year. On our expenditures, we budgeted $598.5 million, so we planned to use quite a bit of fund balance last year in our budget. We had expenditures that came in at $562 million, just shy of $562 million. So, again, that's about $36.5 million less than what we had budgeted. As part of that is ESR dollars that we didn't expend because we had budgeted the entire ESR amount, and we didn't end up spending all of that. But we did see some significant cost increases in salaries and a few other places that are really pushing our expenditures higher than where they can maintain, where we can maintain them. So, our ending fund balance ends at $18.3 million. We had planned for $28.4, so there's a difference there. But what we're required by policy to maintain for the 5% reserve would be $26.5 million. So, that puts us at 3.5% of our 5% reserve. The difference between the reserve requirement and the dollars that we have on hand is about $8.2 million. That's what we'll need to make up in the future. The expectation being that once the reserves fall below the 5% mark, the superintendent and the CFO will start to develop a plan for what those resources look like in the future. And so, we're working through those plans now. We're talking about mitigating strategies for the current year, and I'll go into those in just a moment. But we're also discussing how we utilize our resources differently for the future and what those strategies look like. We want to make sure that we have resources available for things like emergencies and bond planning, and we do have the ability, if there were an emergency today and we didn't have resources available, we would have the ability to temporarily borrow resources, but we would then have to make those resources up. And so, those temporary borrowings sometimes come from our Capital Projects Fund. There's also other ways to borrow, but they're a little more challenging, so, just as a side note. When we talk about our historical finances, and I'll get back to the mitigating strategies in just a moment, when we talk about our historical finances, our budget to actual is, and this is really difficult to see on this slide deck up here, sorry about that. I'll try and find a way to display that differently. But this is actually, I love this graph. I'm excited about this graph. This really shows a budget to actual year by year and where we ended our fund balance. So, the fund balance is the green bar at the bottom, the dark blue and dark orange. I don't know why I picked Bronco colors, but go Broncos. The Bronco colors are meant to represent the actual numbers, and then in a very light coloring behind that is our budgeted, anticipated budget. And so, you can see that in 1819, our budget and actuals were pretty close. We were doing pretty well. 1920, pretty well again. Then we hit 2020, 2021, that's when the pandemic started. While we had some pretty significant expenditure savings in that year, they also, it was also a year where we knew we were going to be using some fund balance there. I'm not sure, I'm not overly convinced that if we hadn't had the pandemic, that we wouldn't have started to see some of these, excuse me, trending issues happen anyway. I'm not sure about inflation. I'm not sure about enrollment, but with birth rates declining, I think we would have continued to see enrollment decline being a consistent issue moving forward regardless of the pandemic. 2122 and 2223 become a little more challenging for us on the budget versus actuals because of ESR. We have these large resources that were being brought into the system and then not necessarily spending all of them, and so, it makes it a little more difficult to trend yourself out. And then you'll see on the fund balance, our trend was 39, 36. We grew to 56, direct relation to the fact that we didn't spend as much as we thought we would in expenditures. And then last year, we spent a little bit more in expenditures for 44, and then finally into 2223, where our expenditures exceeded our revenues by a considerable amount. We had planned for a good portion of that as part of the budget, and we knew during the year that we were starting to see our trends and expenditures grow. We started to discuss mitigating strategies at that point in time in the year, and I think that we just weren't effective and fast enough to react to that. And so, we've been preparing ourselves for that, and what we're seeing right now is that those mitigating strategies continue to be important for us as we move forward. Right now, we've implemented hiring freezes for non-critical positions, very deeply scrutinizing any open positions that come about, reducing discretionary spending, canceling some contracts. We're identifying surplus properties to try to maximize efficiencies and support student engagement, making mid-year position eliminations, and we're doing, we're working on our accountability and refreshing our cycles of how often we're bringing data forward, and so, we'll be doing more information sharing with the board and the superintendent as we progress forward, working on trying to identify, are there lean practices that we can employ? What can we stop doing? What can we do differently, more efficiently, more effectively, and trying to save monies those ways? And then, of course, reviewing our policies and financial oversight, seeking legislative assistance, I think that will be key, and finally, working on how we're going to manage the 2425 budget deficit that will be a result of this. And that's it for me. Sorry. My apologies. Sorry.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
None for me.
No. I just have one comment, only because recently I spent quite a bit of time with Roz and our Government Affairs liaison Charlie Brown, just looking at, just preparing for the legislative session, and it is the, I think, the inflation aspect and the cost of inflation. I think it's this word that's passed around, but once seeing it in the actual dollar amounts of just the different areas of how it's impacting, the district were pretty stark. And so, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, and did you have anything you wanted to add, Superintendent?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz. Item number 16, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 16.1, Approval of Contract Number TSD 23061 between Avid Center and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD 23061 between Avid Center and Tacoma Public Schools in the amount of $202,163, exclusive of sales tax, from September 1, 2023 to June 30, 2026. Funding source: Avid.
I move, yeah, I move item 16.1.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. Thank you, Zee. Item 17, Business Matters. Item 17.1, Approval of Contract Number TSD 23056. Amendment Number 1 between R.O. Health and Tacoma Public Schools, September 1, 2023 through August 31, 2024, although the "4" is missing on the agenda.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD 23056. Amendment Number 1 between R.O. Health and Tacoma Public Schools for $325,000, from September 1, 2023 to August 31, 2024. Funding source: Student Services.
I move to adopt 17.1.
It's moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Item 17.2, Approval of Contract Number TSD 23125 between KYO Autism Therapy and Tacoma Public Schools, September 7, 2023 through August 31, 2024.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number TSD 23125 between KYO Autism Therapy and Tacoma Public Schools for $168,000, from September 7, 2023 to August 31, 2024. Funding source: Student Services.
I move to adopt 17.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Item 17.3, Approval of Service Agreement for Wireless Support for 2024 through 2026.
Good evening. Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the renewal of support for wireless software and hardware with Synchronist Technologies from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2026. Funding source: Technology Levy. And this is support for hardware replacement, and when we have a serious issue, we have to call the contractor or the vendor that makes the equipment to get that kind of support to keep our wireless infrastructure in place, and we buy that through a reseller, which is Synchronist Technologies.
Thank you.
I move to adopt item 17.3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
Item 17.4, Approval of the Guaranteed Maxim Price GMP Amendment Number 1 with B&amp;B Builders' Construction for the Oakland High School Historic Modernization. That's a very challenging word, project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Guaranteed Maxim Price GMP Amendment, which states the cost for Oakland High School historic project. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends the Board authorize a superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Number 1 in the amount of $18,606,636, bringing the total consideration to $22,952,767, excluding sales tax.
I move item 17.4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you, Chris. Oh, you're staying up here again. 17.5, Approval of the Guaranteed Maxim Price GMP Amendment Number 4 to contract between Tacoma Public School District Number 10 and Forma Construction for the Pool's upgrades.
Yes, this is a continuation of our pool upgrades across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve and authorize a superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Number 4 in the amount of $13,372,81, excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt 17.5.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you, Chris. Number 18, Item 18, Other Business. 18.1, Approval of Resolution Proclaiming January 2024 as Tacoma Whole Child Month.
Before this recommendation is read, Director Laura Allen of Whole Child will read the proclamation, and please note, "This will be filled with goodness and kindness for our community."
Good evening. The Whole Child Month proclamation. Whereas every student has the right to attend schools that are safe, inclusive, anti-racist, welcoming, and supportive of their development as critical thinkers who contribute to our global and natural world. And whereas each student deserves to be challenged academically, experience a comprehensive education that promotes critical thinking and creativity, and be prepared for higher education, meaningful employment in our global economy, and lifelong success. And whereas every student has the right to be supported and being compassionate and kind by educators who are qualified, caring adults, and engage in personalized learning opportunities. Whereas every student has the right to learn about and practice a healthy lifestyle in an environment that is physically and emotionally safe, to be empowered to advocate for the social, physical, and mental wellness of themselves and others, access resources for healthy well-being, and be hopeful about their futures. Whereas every student has the right to opportunities to discover their passions, to be curious, to love learning, to be engaged in school and the broader community. And whereas every student has a right to access educational experiences where they develop the skills, knowledge, and fortitude to identify and challenge personal, systemic, and societal bias. And whereas every student has a right to acknowledge in school, to access in-school and extracurricular programs that provide students with experiences relevant to their individual passions, career, and higher educational goals. And whereas every student has a right to a community that actively supports the whole child by dedicating resources and investments which empower students to thrive. I therefore request the St. English Board that January 2024 be Whole Child Month in Tacoma Public Schools and encourage all people in our community to join me in this special observance. Thank you.
It is with great honor that the Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Whole Child, recommends that the Board of Directors proclaim January 2024 as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encourage community partner municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a whole-child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
I move item 18.1.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to say that I, first of all, I want to thank Laura, you and your entire team, and everyone in Tacoma Public Schools who embrace the Whole Child, Whole Educator approach to education with such enthusiasm, passion, and commitment. And I think in so many ways, our students and our staff are doing such, so much better in many ways, especially speaking about their mental health than a lot of other kids across the country. So, thank you again for all the hard work and the leadership that you provide and your team provides. team provides to keep this going. And I hope that every district passes and that the state, again, I think we've asked the governor to also declare January a Whole Child Month. So I'm hoping that other districts and other municipalities and everyone gets on this train. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think just noting number eight is really important. Every student has the right to a community, community, that actively supports the whole child by dedicating resources and investments which empower students to thrive. I think a lot of the feedback we get all the time is saying like, well, this is happening and our kids are failing and this isn't happening and where are these resources and I can't find this and there's no access to that. And I like that some people have pointed out, the schools only have so much that they can do. And number eight really extends that offering to the community to step up, to get engaged in this work and to care for students. So I think because of number eight, I've always supported Whole Child and S E L work that we've been doing. And I appreciate your leadership on that. But I also just want to take the time to like notate number eight. It's really big. It's the community. How do we all get involved in helping students thrive in this Tacoma community?
Thank you. All right. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a resolution, so we might.
Oh, well, fine. See, we were all in our feelings up here, Malie.
Sorry, sorry. President Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Baumgart, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCullough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Resolution passes, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
Item eighteen point two, approval of conveyance of land to the City of Tacoma to be used as right-of-way for pedestrian improvements, as referenced in temporary construction easement A dash fifteen-ten, right-of-way deed number D dash seven-five-five-one, and other documents as required.
The city will be making improvements to the crosswalk, new traffic signals, and new eighty-eight curbs. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that a Board of Directors authorize a superintendent or those he delegates with authority to negotiate and improve the conveyance of this land at Hilltop Heritage from the district to the city to be used as the right-of-way for pedestrian improvements as described in construction easement A fifty fifteen-ten, right-of-way deed number seventy-five fifty-one, and other documents that may be needed for this transaction.
I move to adopt eighteen point two. My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, four zero. Thank you. Oh, Chris, are you sticking around? Okay. Eighteen, oh, no. Thanks, all right. Chris is off the hook now. Item eighteen point three, appointing members to the for and against committees for the Neighborhood Schools Improvement and Safety Upgrades Bond on the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot.
Hello, Megan. The Chief Communications Officer recommends the Board of Directors appoint Mayor Victoria Woodard, C E O of the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce Andrea Ray, and Educator Emeritus Willie Stewart to the for committee, and Jay Dottery to the against committee for the Neighborhood School Improvement and Safety Upgrades Bond on the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four ballot.
I move item eighteen point three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? No? Double checking that this is not a resolution? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, four zero. Thank you, Tanisha. Item eighteen point four, adoption of resolution number two-one-three-two identifying authorized signers for district bank accounts.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt a resolution number two-one-three-two and approve the updated list of employees who can authorize transactions on these accounts and authorize the superintendent and or designated to approve the plan.
I move to adopt eighteen point four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? No? I'm going to pass it over to General Counsel.
All right. President Keating, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Stroger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Baumgart, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCullough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Resolution passes, four zero.
Thank you. And now we're down to item number nineteen, board comments and reports. And I feel even though we're in different seats, I still want to pass it over to who goes first.
We should probably start with the student rep.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Lilian Taylor. I'm a student representative from Silas High School. So I just have a couple things to talk about, like relating to like choir and our musical and stuff. So we just had our choir concert last week, which was really fun and a nice way to wrap up kind of this first part of the year. We went to our Leavenworth trip this last Sunday and that was really fun. Our bus broke down, so that was eventful.
That seems like it's supposed to happen, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mean Girls rehearsals have already started for our musical, which is really exciting. And we're already kind of starting to bond and create that whole cast feeling. And today, we just had our middle school recruitment tour with band and orchestra, which was frankly very exhausting just because just going to these four different schools. But it was kind of nice to see all these like really young kids like kind of engaging with the music programs and stuff, so, yeah.
And when is Mean Girls, the performances?
Um, I believe the second and third weekends of February, like the ninth, tenth, and then the Thursday, Friday, Saturday after that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Lily.
Look forward to it.
Excellent. All right, now to the adults.
You ready?
I don't know, are you?
I don't know. So I wanted to start off my board comments with a huge shout out to Ms. Anita at Manitow. My family has a very long history in the district. My grandmother trained Ms. Anita, and now Ms. Anita serves my grandmother's great-grandson at Manitow. So like just that like prolonged history and experience in the district. She's really sweet also because as an auntie who runs late because I don't have little people, I have to call and I'm like, hey, I'm on my way to Manitow. And Ms. Anita said, is that you, Chelseaa? I was like, yes, it is me again. I only have to pick up when people call me, so I never know. So I wanted to start with a huge thanks and shout out to our O P P T staff. I'm learning a lot of acronyms. And then another comment was kind of going back to how do we get to this grading policy and like all the ways that we were trying to include other people? And I went back to like these core questions, like, does the board engage all members of the community in developing and sustaining the belief that each and every student can achieve? And that improvement in student learning can be made regardless of existing circumstances or resources? I think like when we were going through the process of doing the listing sessions and reaching out to students and teachers and just really taking in all that feedback, I know the Equity Policy Review Team, they did their part as well. And then the superintendent, all the staff at CAP, they were doing their part to really engage the community. I know that sometimes when things roll out, it's really painful. I just got a new job and they just rolled out a new policy on us as well that is going to shift our transportation costs and the lack of reimbursement for that. And it was kind of stressful at first and I was like, how can I walk with empathy and grace while also understanding and ask more questions? So I really want to take the time to thank all the teachers, the parents who come here and communicate with us and say, I'm still asking questions. I want to know more. Because that means that the engagement process didn't stop, right? And so I never want to be in a position where we as a board are saying, we don't want to engage anymore. So I do love that, we're open to that. And then thinking about classroom supports as we're in the middle of a hiring freeze and there are police shortages across the nation and there are teacher shortages across the nation. How do we as a community, and that goes back to that Whole Child, number eight, support classrooms? And then community and parent volunteerism, how do we engage more folks? I know last year during some of our listing sessions, even about grades, parents were bringing up the fact like, I want to volunteer in my school. And Amanda Scott Thomas was at ours and she was like, hey, I'm the director of partnership. Here's a way how you can volunteer in your classroom. You're saying your class needs more support. If you have the time, here's how you sign up to volunteer. And I think maybe just rolling that out in a more clear and succinct way so that teachers can give that information to parents who want to engage and volunteer. And it's all about, you know, our front-facing website, but also just making things flashy and accessible, just the recommendation, not say anything. So then also, I recently toured stadium at their open house night. I'll be honest, there are parts of this city, and I'm born and raised here, that I just have not really explored that often. And I remember being a student, walking in a stadium and just looking up the staircase and be like, this is overwhelming. Okay, as an adult, I walked into stadium, looked up the staircase, still felt overwhelmed. Shout out to those kids who are marching up and down those stairs every day. The A S B was taking us on guided tours. And when I tell you, they were not out of breath. But all the middle schoolers and all the adults, we were like, what? We're on floor four, we're tired. I learned about a lot of their committees, their clubs. They have a Navy, their R O T C is associated with the Navy. And a big plus for them, they want to shout out that, the majority of their students are actually female students. And that's a huge shift in R O T C for their campus. Like in the past like ten years, they've been tracking it. And just like the amount of like female engagement in that naval J R O T C, they're really proud of that work and so am I. Learned about their theater program also. Our high schools, regardless if they're specialty or not, they are doing really special and wonderful things. So I'm really looking forward to be invited back. They were like, when will you be back again? I was like, I don't know, send an email, I'll be there. Because I wasn't expecting to be at the open house, but I had the time, made the time, showed up. So then what's going on in our community? Communities in school is hosting a sock drive. All children and adult sock sizes are needed for homeless Tacoma students. Please help us exceed our goal of five hundred pairs. Please drop off new socks at the Columbia Bank Allen Moore Branch at nineteen fifty-nine South Union Avenue in Tacoma. So one of our partners is partnering to support students. You guys hear me talk about this all the time, the clothing drives and the needs of our most at-risk and most marginalized students. So there's a sock drive. If you can't do much, it's right by the Walmart. And that's what I did. I went into the Walmart, picked up an adult pair of socks and a child like pack of socks, and I dropped them off at Columbia Bank. So, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Rock, paper, scissors?
I'll go real quick. I don't have much other than identifying the fact that time flies in the blink of an eye. I feel like we were just here at the first board meeting of the school year and here we are at the last board meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. And it brings me to the position of wanting to make sure that I shout out our staff and our students for making it, right? There was one point at the top of the year with my kids, like, I don't want to go to school. And I'm like, well, that's funny, you're going. But here we are. So I just want to encourage folks to keep pushing through, right? You're going to get a nice little break. Folks can sit down, spend some time with the folks that matter the most to you. There were many times where I'm like, what did I sign myself up for? In full transparency, I'm missing time with my children to serve other people's children. It's because it means a lot to me. So as we sit here and we get ready to step into this little break, I wanted to encourage folks to maximize that time, right? Director Leon is not here for a very specific reason, not clear to you all, right? Folks up here have families, folks, you all have families. Engage with the folks that matter the most to you, okay? It's important that you prioritize that. So for me, I'm going to be very intentional about that. But to our students, there was a time when you think that you didn't think you'd make it to December. You're here in December, we're halfway through the year. So keep pushing, keep powering through, but definitely maximize this time with your families during the break. I don't have any other report other than that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's been, it seems like it's been a long time since our last board meeting. So trying to think of all the things we've done. And one of the things that we all did actually was to go to the W A S D A Annual Conference that was in Bellevue. And so we all went up for two and a half days of professional development where we were able to go to lots of fabulous trainings, some required, which was great to get those all done. And then also some that were just interesting, personally interesting to whatever, you know, we went to different ones and then we shared later what we learned and that was very exciting. And I also want to say at that W A S D A conference that our own newly-elected president also was elected to chair the, I'm always going to get this name, the Federal Relations Network. I knew there was an F R and I was like, what's the R? Federal Relations Network for W A S D A, so for our state, school board director, she is leading that committee. And that is very well-aligned with the work she's also doing for us because a couple years ago, or a year ago, whatever it was, we elected her to be also our F R N member on that committee. So anyway, so congratulations, that was great. And then other than that, there's a couple of really interesting events that I've gone to, summits, et cetera. One was the Local Solutions Gun Violence Prevention Summit, which was really fascinating hearing from, you know, it was run by the Alliance for Prevention of Gun Violence. And it was, there was a lot of great speakers and we were talking about some of those issues that you, you know, raised about, you know, safety and security and what we can, what we as a community can do about it. And the audience was really quite a cross-section. So that was a great day spent. Also went to, recently to the RAND Health and Wellbeing Workshop, which was an invitation workshop where there were about fifteen of us, also cross-section, healthcare, higher ed, K twelve, nonprofits, you know, that we all were talking about, how do we improve the health and well-being of our community? And it's, you know, it's much more than blue zones. I mean, it's really about how the social, emotional well-being and you can, you know, Laura, that I was talking, Laura Allen, I was talking a lot about Whole Child at that event. Woo-hoo! And so that was another thought-provoking day. And it was a long day, but it was a good one. And then, you know, you know I'm going to talk about J Mac. We had our, we had our annual meeting this month, which was a wrap-up of all the great work that J Mac has done collectively this year. And it's always a proud moment when you sit and you look at your fellow electeds and their C E, the CEOs, the superintendent, of course, was there and others were too, just sharing, you know, how we've learned from each other and really started to, in a very major way, align our funding and our policy so that we're actually moving major and addressing major social and economic issues in our community. So I just want to say that was very worthwhile. And if anyone's ever interested about what's going on at J Mac, you can just put in Joint Municipal Action Committee Tacoma, Washington, and it'll send you to the City of Tacoma website. You can also get there from our website. But just if you wanted to know what happened at that meeting, they'll, I'm sure the minutes will be up soon. Looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four, so we're going to start again. So, and then also, yeah, I think, I guess that's it. Everything else is coming. So that's it for me.
You sure?
Uh, positive.
Okay. Well, echo, I did, I was able to attend the event, the J Mac event, was that just last Friday? And one of the things that I did really appreciate, in addition to the presentations from community partners, was the conversation that I had at my table in terms, and a good part of the conversation we had was about funding and sustainable funding of initiatives. And summer late nights was one of the main things that we talked about. And we had representation from county council there and Metro Parks and some other community partners. And one of our community partners actually, who was from Shiloh Baptist Church, that actually served, was, served at one of our sites for summer late nights and just talked about their experience as one of the providers who participated, which was, I think, not necessarily a story that I've heard enough about. Like what are the impacts and what were those community partners who participated? What impacts did they see? And so it was really rewarding to listen to their perspectives and then the benefits and, you know, how they really hope that they continue. And that gave me an excellent opportunity to say to our other partners at the table, we need sustainable funding. And so like really discuss, like how do we come together again, not just for one time? So I really appreciated being a part of that conversation through J Mac. And then the other, there was the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting, which there was a really good conversation just around community safety in reference to the violence and crime that has been happening. And one, how deeply complicated it is, and a lot of the different moving pieces that are at play. So I've been engaging with a lot of city leaders as well as county leaders in terms of coming together to Director McCullough's point about this is community, this is a community issue, and how do we do that better? And how do we support those impacted by what's happening? And I feel like it's a continuation of, I mean, where we were last year around gun violence, so. And then I did get to attend, Congresswoman Strickland was at Lincoln. I have no idea what date that actually was, but I know it was since the last board meeting. since the last board meeting. And she spoke to some, they were civics classes, right? Civics classes and the Q and A aspect. Those students did not hold back on the kinds of questions that they asked and really appreciated that. And always appreciate Congresswoman Strickland's time and her commitment just to engaging with students. So that was a really, and then we did meet with her afterwards in terms of just the things that, on a federal level, that she's already supported and helped advocate for us. And the Maritime Skills Academy was one of the big things, but we had a conversation afterwards. And then I did at, at the annual conference connect with, there is the Indigenous or Native and Alaska Native government-to-government training that we've all, that the legislature said that we, Board Directors and Superintendents need to attend. And there was one school director from Seattle Public Schools who is also Native. We had a really robust conversation after the workshop, just in terms of helping, just engaging and understanding tribal government and, and how do we engage and how do we strengthen those conversations? So that was a really unexpected and meaningful discussion. And then yesterday, I did go to the Indian Education Building and they were passing out meals. And it's a really meaningful partnership with the Puyallup Tribe. And they did this for Thanksgiving and then they're doing this also for the holiday break. And over thanks for Thanksgiving, they provided a hundred and forty or so meals. And yesterday, they were providing a hundred and fifty people, a hundred and fifty families. And the thing that I really appreciated learning is that there's no threshold or you just sign up. You want a meal, you sign up, you get the meal. And so I always really appreciate David Seif and his team, Robin and Liz, they're just, it's just meaningful to see their work and get to talk to some of the community members that they actually serve. And so that was really special. I don't think I have anything else. So, oh, excellent.
Yes, one other thing that, that I also attended and was just so thrilled was the open house that was hosted by the Port of Tacoma and Tacoma Public Schools for the Maritime Two Five Threes Maritime Skill Center. And it was in, you know, the, it's really big building with lots of space. And when I first walked in, because I got there early, and I'm always early, so I got there early and I'm thinking, I'm not sure this was a good choice. It's going to look ridiculous when six people show up. It was amazing how many people came, how many general public. I mean, it was not, it was not, you know, TPS staff or port staff. It was a lot of people from, from the community who were coming to find out what's it all about. And there was a lot of enthusiasm. Metro Parks was, was there because they're talking about putting a park in. And we're all just, everybody had these boards up and sticky notes and the public was writing their ideas. And it was just magical. And I just wanted to share that with you because I know that Tacoma Public Schools is really excited about this Maritime Skill Center. And I know the port is too, but the community is. And I just wanted to express gratitude to everyone who's enthusiastically volunteering to help us move this forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that reminded me, I did attend an event that was hosted by the Foundation for Tacoma Students last night around the bond measure. And I just, my takeaway from that is there were a number of community partners that I was not quite as aware of in the same way in terms of the architecture and the contractors that like, that help with our playgrounds. And they were just, and it was really interesting to hear how many of the folks in the room had been part of so many of the different projects across the district and then also the messier upgrades and upkeeps and things that aren't as shiny and pretty as a new building. So it was just really, it was a group of people that I don't, I just didn't have the same level of awareness of. And so I was really appreciative. It expanded my understanding of community partners. So I appreciated getting to meet some of those folks. Superintendent, do you have anything else? Okay. Item number twenty, announcements of next regular board meetings, January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. All these say twenty twenty-three. January eleventh, twenty twenty-four is our next business meeting at six PM. January eighteenth, also twenty twenty-four, six PM is a study session. And then January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four will be, at six PM will be a business meeting. And that brings us to number, item twenty-one. And I call, oh my God, this is a big deal. Meeting is adjourned.